May I call on Syaikh Abdul Wahab Pak to lay the invocation? Please rise for the invocation.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Allahumma salli wasallim ala siddin Muhammad. Walla alihi wa sahbihi ajmain. Robbanaa zulamna anfasnaa wa illa am tagfarlanaa tarhamnaa laa nakuunaan makhashir. Robbanaa innanaa samiinaa munadiyya yunadiyil ilaiimani an aaminu bi rabbikum fa aman. Robbanaa fa gafirlanaa feenak antal gafur rahim. Warhamnaa feenak akhir rahim. Allahumma laa tadadana zaban pi hazan maqob illa gafarda. Walla maridan illa shafita. Walla hajatan min hawaay jina fi hazan hyayah. Illa antan ala qadaa ya Robbana. Wassalamallah wasalam ala siddin Muhammad. Subhanallah rabbik rabbil ajsati amma isikum. Wassalamun ala mursalinu hamdulillah.
Alhamdulillah. Please remain standing for the singing of the national anthem to be followed by the Bangsamoro hymn.
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Simulaon hanggang ngayon, isang naging layon. Magka-isaan magulo, karitingan ay bagong tun. Mayon tayo mula sa habo ng dakar, diyabo sa paganim na buhan lang. Binaga ko sa muso at paniniwala, ang iha'aw para sa kabataan. Bangsamoro ay tagumpay, bulan ang pawis subo at buhay. Kabaya pan, katalugan, ay atin ang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalayin bangsamoro. Bangsamoro, bangsamoro, lagi kang mamahalim. Walang pipigil sa damdamin, mga pangako'y tutuparin. Ang buhay kami't sayoy magpapatay, mananatili sa muso't isipan. Ang kaapunggutim kay nagbuwis ng buhay, nasabiling ka ng may kapal. Bangsamoro ay tagumpay, bulan ang pawis subo at buhay. Kabaya pan, katalugan, ay atin ang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalayin bangsamoro.
The secretary is directed to all the roll.
Roll call of the honorable members of the BTA. Abbas Akmad. Abbas Harun. Abbas Basit. Abu Mujib. Kalamia Liza.
Present.
Ali Ibrahim. Ali Lanang Junior. Ali Edi. Amboluto Soharto. Aminuddin Abdalajis. Ampatuan Baytan. Anayatin Susana. Antao Muhammad Kelly. Arnaldo Marian. Asnawi Dan. Babaw Ali Montaha. Balindong Pangalian. Basman Anna Tarhata. Andau Bay Malieha.
Present.
Nilanggarin Ibrahim. Hajar Abdullah Khalid. Hasim Abdoumou. Hassan Hatimil. Ekbal Mohagian. Mayel Rasool. Jakilan Muslimin. Chikiri Al Bakil. Kahalan Ben Martin. Karun Faisal. Lim John Anthony.
Present.
Loong Benjamin. Loong Don Mustafa. Lorena Jose.
Present.
Makapaaarab Abdoumou.
Present.
Makasalong Magtian. Makatanong Amrosin. Maglangit Tarhata. Malik Hamid. Mantawil Bailing. Mastura Esop. Matalam Jafar Apollo Mikael. Mawalil Amil Bahar. Mendoza Freylin.
Present.
Mitibang Michael. Mitibang Tawakat. Sari Abdul Karim. Misari Norred. Mitmog Rasol Junior. Munios Husein. Oranon Suwib. Takasa Obaida. Pak Abdul Wahab. Pangandaman Nabila Margarita. Marcasio Randolph. Piyang Rabon Senior. Ramos Jamila. Salindab Said. Salik Ali. Sanki Ali. Semao Mariaser. Semao Romeo. Saik Said. Silungan Aida. Sinurinding Kadil Junior. Sulaiman Ali. Tagu Pay Salin. Tan Nabil. Usman Adzwar. Gusto Basir. Uyoyod City Fahani.
Present.
Muhammad.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. Mister Speaker, with fifty-one members of the parliament physically responded to the call, and nine responded via Zoom. We therefore have a total of sixty members of the parliament present in today's session. Sir Speaker, we certify the presence of Korom. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
With the certification of the Secretary General, that there are sixty members of parliament who are present, the Chair declares the presence of a Korom. The floor leader.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. My courtesies to the Honorable Chief Minister Ahad B. Ibrahim, the Honorable Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leaders, Members of the Parliament, guests and staff in the gallery. Good afternoon to everyone. Mister Speaker, before I move to amend the order of business, may I have the pleasure of informing this honorable body that we have a visitor from Nepal in the person of Dr. Menendra Rijal. Mr. Dr. Rijal was a former member of the Parliament of Nepal from 2006 until 2022. He was former Minister of the Ministry of Defence in 2021, and a former Minister of the Ministry of Information and Communications Technology from 2014 to 2015, and a former Minister of the Ministry of Federal Affairs, Constituent Assembly, Parliamentary Affairs and Culture. Mister Speaker, he is joined by Senior Program Officer Noraidat Shu and Ms. Aisha Mittangal of the Asia Foundation.
You are welcome to the Bangsamoro Parliament. Welcome, Honorable. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I would like to move to amend the order of business to include proposed Resolution Number 287 entitled "A Resolution Congratulating the Delegates of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslim Indanao Barm in the 63rd Palarong Pambansa," also known as the Palaro 2023, held in Marikina City, Philippines, and proposed Resolution Number 388 entitled "Resolution Congratulating and Commending Muhammad Nur Gumaos Kasib for His Exemplary Achievement in Winning a Bronze Medal in the 55th International Chemistry Olympiad 2023 and Forgiving Pride and Honor to the Bangsamoro People." I so move, Mister Speaker.
There is objection to the motion. There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. May I now move to dispense with the reading of Journal Number 13, Mister Speaker.
There is objection, there being none, the motion is approved. The reading of the journal is dispensed with. Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to approve the Journal Number 13 of July 25, 2023 session, Mister Speaker.
There is any motion, is there any objection, there being none. Being seconded, it is approved.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. May we now hear from the Honorable Chief Minister Ahad B. Ibrahim for his Chief Minister's hour.
Dear Chief Minister Ahad Balawang Ibrahim of the Bangsamoro is hereby recognized to deliver his message to the parliament.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah. Inaustain. Wassalamu wassalam. Muhammad. Speaker. Yan Balindong. Colleagues in the Bangsamoro Transition Authority Parliament, Members of the Cabinet, Friends and Partners for Peace and Development. Let me acknowledge the presence of our brother Nepal former Member of Parliament and Minister of Defence and presently International international consultant for the Asia Foundation, our beloved Doctor, Dr. Menendra P. Rijal. Thank you very much for coming. Ladies and gentlemen, my fellow Bangsamoro. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. It has been one year since we took our oath for the extended transition period. We vowed to continue our work of building a Bangsamoro government worthy of the sacrifices of the people, the blood, the sweat and tears poured into uphold our right to self-determination. Today, I am proud to stand before you this august body composed of members of earnestly working for an empowered, cohesive and progressive Bangsamoro. We have achieved significant milestones within the year from the passage of the Bangsamoro Electoral Code and other important legislations to the continuing reduction of poverty incidents in the region, the record brick investments and growing economy that contribute to the overall better living condition for our people. Our collective achievements merit the recognition of President Ferdinand Bonbon Marcos Junior. As stated in his sonar, the president is proud of the progress that the Barm has taken. He further expressed his commitment to help the Bangsamoro region to become self-governing, progressive and effective. While these achievements are indeed remarkable, we must stay grounded and as we strive for excellence, we must also reflect on the areas where we can do better or draw things differently. Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, for today's Chief Ministers Hour, allow me to highlight updates towards an area of governance which I think is becoming more and more important recently, and that is strengthening our cooperation and coordination between and among different labels of government. Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, last July 6, 2023, as a result of the various consultative meetings of the Intergovernmental Energy Board, we were able to sign the circular for joint awards for energy contracts in the Barm. The said circular is very important considering that the Bangsamoro region is gifted with natural resources, natural source of energy which can spur the development of our homeland, Insha Allah. Provided however that this is done responsibly in the context-sensitive and peace-promoting approach, the circular aims to set the requirements, processes and standard to guarantee that the exploration and development activities will adhere to pertinent rules and best practices. This will further boost investments in the region which will translate to thousands of jobs and livelihood opportunities, Insha Allah. Last week, we conducted the general meeting of the Council of Leaders for 2023. It is important to note however that the Council of Leaders already met few times particularly during the call for the extension of the transition period. The general meeting however was extra special as it was highlighted by the ceremonial outtaking of all the ex-official members and the sectoral representatives of the council. The meeting proper discussed the terms of preference and other agenda items circled around stronger cooperation and coordination between the regional government and the local government units. It likewise tackled the upcoming barangai and SK election in which the members of the council vowed to jointly work for a peaceful, orderly and democratic elections. Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, the Intergovernmental Relation Body continue to conduct meeting to resolve issues concerning the exercise of powers of the national government and the Bangsamoro government. The IGRB also serves as a great opportunity for advancing the operationalization of the important provisions of the Bangsamoro Organic Law such as the special entry of the MLF and MNLF members to the Philippine National Police, the process of which was formally started last year with the conduct of the National Police Commission's NAPLCOM Special Qualifying Eligibility Examinations. The passers were then subjected to further examination, tests and trainings at par with the existing professional requirements. Recently, one hundred two members of the MLF and MNLF who made it to the final cut formally joined the PNP after completing a very stringent recruitment process. We are confident that this special set of new policemen and policewomen will contribute in protecting our citizens and ensuring peace and order in the region. The Bangsamoro government and the national government will explore the possibilities of providing further opportunities for MLF and MNLF members to join the Philippine National Police. This will be done in conjunction with the continuing assertion of the full implementation of the normalization process. Needless to say, this aspect of the Bangsamoro peace process is crucial in sustaining the gains of peace. Last August 3, we continued the third phase of the decommissioning process in which 1,301 members have been added to the list of decommission combatants, bringing the total number to 26,145 or 65.36% of the 40,000 target. This also serves as a signal of our strong commitment to the signed peace accord, the comprehensive agreement on the Bangsamoro. It is important to remind ourselves that the other component of the normalization process such as the disbandment of private armed groups, grant of amnesty are all of equal importance. The normalization process is designed to transform not only the combatants but also their communities from being conflict-affected areas into peaceful and progressive communities. Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, let me take this opportunity to express my gratitude to this august body for passing the Bangsamoro Science High School Act yesterday. This priority legislation will be beneficial in harnessing the potential of our youth in the field of science and shape them to become globally competitive. We hope to provide conducive learning environment for innovation and knowledge production, Insha Allah. Let me also take this opportunity to request my dear colleagues to expedite the enactment of important legislations, the bills creating the municipalities in the special geographic areas of the Barm and the Bangsamoro Local Governance Code. The former is important in filling in the gaps that were observed as a result of the levicit for the inclusion of barangays from North Cotabato to the Barm. While at the onset, the Bangsamoro government included these barangays in the implementation of its various programs projects. And there are gaps in governance that can only be addressed through the creation of municipalities from the special geographic areas. These areas are not only special because of their location but also because along with Cotabato City, these are the new or expanded areas of the Barm. Granted that we take the territory of the arm as our baseline, hence it is only fitting that we enact these bills as soon as possible, Insha Allah. The latter, on the other hand, will shed light on the relationships between the regional government and its local government units. It will also set governance structures, processes and systems that will help shape more responsive and empowering local government units for its respective constituents. Once passed, the Bangsamoro Local Government Governance Code will become the fifth priority code enacted by this august body. Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues, the enactment of these important legislations will almost complete the laws and governance structures necessary for the conduct of a peaceful and credible first parliamentary election in 2025, Insha Allah. The faster we enact this priority legislation, the better it is for our people as it would give ample time for understanding the nuances and implications of these laws in their everyday lives. Mister Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, we only have two years left on our term. Let us make the most out of the opportunity to serve the Bangsamoro. Cooperation and coordination are two of the important keys for a successful transition period. Let us ensure that this cooperation and coordination are indeed for a greater and genuine cause and not just for mere personal interest and convenience. May we all continue to serve the Bangsamoro with pure hearts and sincere intentions. Wabillahi Taufeeq wal hidayah. Thank you and wassalamualaikum.
At this juncture, we are suspending the session for five minutes and are inviting the delegation from Nepal to join us on the floor to have photo ops with the members of the parliament and the chief minister. You are invited, Your Excellency and your delegation. Suspension for five minutes.
The majority leader. Please go to your proper seats, gentlemen and ladies. As I resume, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we now move on to reference of business. Bills on first reading, we have three for today. Mister Speaker, may we request the Secretary General to please read the titles, the authors and the co-authors of the proposed bills, Mister Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the bills on first reading.
BTA Parliament Bill Number 213 entitled Unestablishing Drug Rehabilitation Center in Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, otherwise known as BAI Tahelia Bahaykan Lungan for drug dependence, prohibiting funds therefore and for other purposes. Author member of the parliament, Kadi Sinulindi Junior. Co-authors members of parliament, Lanang Ali Junior, Eddie Ali Mujib Abu, Abdalaji Saminuddin, Susanna Nettin, Dan Asnowi, Ali Montaha Babau, Bay Maliha Kandaw, Shia Elaiha Dumama Alba, Suwarto Ismail, Mataro Listino, Rasul Ismail, Muslimin Jakilan, Albakil Jikiri, Khalid Haji Abdowak, Hatimil Hassan, Dan Martin Kahalan, Jose Lorena, Hamid Malik, Marjani Makasalong, Proile Mendoza, Tawakal Mitimbang, Michael Mitimbang, Abdul Karim Miswari, Nur Reda Miswari, Ali Salik, Rasul Mitmug Junior, Suwai Borannon, Abdul Wahab Pak, Randall Percasio, Ramon Piyang Senior, Ali Salik, Ali Sanki, Romeo Semah, Aida Silungan and C.T. Fahani Uyoyon. BTA Parliament Bill Number 231 entitled Unestablishing the Local Area Network Land System of the Barang- of the Bangsa Moro Government. Authors members of the parliament, Jose Munius, Suwarto Ismail, Abdowah Hasin, Mataro Listino, Marian Hernado, Tawakal Mitimbang, Basir Utu, Suwai Borannon, Mujib Abu, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Abdalaji Saminuddin, and Said Sheikh. BTA Parliament Bill Number 232 entitled An Act Prohibiting the Unauthorized Construction or Alteration of Any Part of the Public Roads and Bridges or Placing Any Object Thereat That Causes Danger to the Public or Causes Inconvenience, Providing Funds Thereof and Penalty for Violation. Authors members of the parliament, Jose Munius, Suwarto Ism- Suwarto Ismail, Abdowah Hasin, Mataro Listino, Marian Hernado, Tawakal Mitimbang, Basir Utu, Suwai Borannon, Mujib Abu, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Abdalaji Saminuddin, and Said Sheikh.
Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. We now move on to proposed resolutions. Starting with proposed resolution number 263, may we request the Secretary General to please read the title, the author and the co-authors.
But before that, uh the those who are interested to be co-authors, you can fill out the forms provided.
Thank you for reminding, Mister Speaker. Yes, uh the three bills, three proposed bills are all private member bills. May we request members of the parliament who wish to be co-authors or associated with the bills, fill up the forms uh provided to you and submit the same to the secretariat. Thank you for reminding, Mister Speaker.
Proceed.
May we request the Secretary General to please read the title of proposed resolution number 263 and the author and co-authors.
The Secretary General is directed to read the proposed resolutions, the title and the author and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number 263 entitled Resolution Directing the Ministry of Social Services and Development, MSSD, to Apprise the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, BTA Parliament, on the Status of the Trafficking in Persons Tips in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and the Programs and Initiatives Being Implemented by the Ministry. Author members of the parliament, Abahintan Angpatuan. Co-authors members of the parliament, Amel Baharmawalin, Lysalamia, Suwarto Angboluto, Don Mustafa Long, Rasul Mitmug Junior, and Rasul Ismail.
Mister Speaker, I move to refer proposed resolution number 263 to the Committee on Social Services.
There is a motion to refer our proposed resolution 263 to the Committee on Social Services and Development. Uh duly seconded. Do I hear any objection? Chair hears none. Same is hereby approved.
Next is proposed resolution number 332. May we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author and the co-authors.
The secretariat is directed to read the proposed resolution title to include the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number 332 entitled Resolution Calling on the Ministry of Transportation and Communication, MOTC, the Airport Transportation Services, APS, and the Civil Aviation Authority of the Bangsa Moro, CAAB, to immediately and properly implement the Muslim Mindanao Autonomy Act Number 324, MMA Act Number 324. Author members of parliament, Adol Mustafa Long. Co-authors members of parliament, Lysalamia, Abahintan Angpatuan, Rasul Mitmug Junior, Amel Baharmawalin, Suwarto Angboluto, Rasul Ismail, Benjamin Loong, Japara Polo, Michael Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jose Lorena, Abdalaji Saminuddin, Yamila Ramos, Aspar Osman, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Eddie Ali, Tawakal Mitimbang, Mujib Abu, Suwai Borannon, Basir Utu, Bay Maliha Kandaw, Michael Mitimbang, and Dan Asnowi.
From the chair. From the chair, may we know what what is the title of this MMA Act 324? It's big.
Mister Speaker, I am uh aware that MMA Act Number 324 pertains to the naming of the Sangasanga Airport to Tawi Tawi Airport.
Can we state that in the proposal resolution at the proper times? Because it's big. It mentions the MMA Act, but it does not mention the title.
Uh yes, uh Mister Chairman, with your respect, Mister Speaker, uh
The minister is recognized.
Uh I propose that this will be treated as simple resolution because this pertains only to the implementation of MMA Act Number 324 for the renaming of the Sangasanga Airport to Tawi Tawi Airport.
With that manifestation, Mister Speaker, I move that we treat this as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to treat the Resolution Number 332, uh Resolution Calling on Ministry of Transportation and Communication, the Airport Transportation Services and the Civil Aviation Authority of the Bangsa Moro to immediately and properly implement Muslim Mindanao Autonomy Act Number 324. Please include the title. As a simple resolution, duly seconded. Do I hear any objection? Chair hears none. Same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, may we first uh recognize MP Jet Lim over in the Zoom, Mister Speaker.
The honorable gentleman from Tawi Tawi, MP Jet Lim, Jan Anthony Lim is hereby recognized on Zoom.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh from Sulu and Tawi Tawi, actually, Mister Speaker.
From Sulu and Tawi Tawi.
Yeah, before we proceed approving the resolution, uh Mister Speaker, I'd like to make a little manifestation. The MMA Act was, of course, enacted prior to the ball. In fact, the administration of the airports was transferred transferred only in January 2023 to the Bangsa Moro Aviation Authority. Perhaps it would be proper for us to study why MMA Act was not was was not implemented. One of the uh reason may be it was at the time ultra virus because uh CAAB was not under armed. It was a national agency with its own charter. Maybe this is something that we can look into uh before we urge the Minister of Transportation to proceed with that. Although I have no position, uh I have no objection as to the renaming of an airport or any airport for that matter. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you for your manifestation, the gentleman from Sulu and Tawi Tawi.
Mister Speaker, may we now recognize the principal author of the proposed resolution.
Thank you.
MP Don Dong.
The gentleman again from Sulu is recognized to deliver the sponsor.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Um Mister Speaker and members of the parliament and distinguished colleagues, we have the honor to seek approval of this resolution 322, calling on the Ministry of Transportation.
324 but 322?
332.
324 nakalagay sa in my copy. MMA Act 324. Ah, resolution 332. Okay, sorry.
Master ni Minister. Yeah, and uh
Please proceed.
Calling on the to uh properly uh implement MMA Act 324. Um actually, this resolution, uh Mister Speaker, was prompted by the special request of Governor Mangsali uh in a meeting with businessmen who emphasized the importance of already having the uh Sangasanga Airport called as the Tawi Tawi Airport. We act was found to be critical. Mister Speaker, uh as in RA 11054, it states that all subsisting laws enacted by the arm shall be deemed valid and in effect unless inconsistent with this organic law or repealed by laws passed by the parliament. As it stands, Mister Speaker, um this uh uh this MMA Act 324 is neither inconsistent with the Bangsa Moro organic law nor has it been repealed by the BTA. Thus, my dear colleagues, in the in view of the enactment of MMA Act 324 and the provisions of ball which treat subsisting laws enacted by the RLA as deemed valid and in effect, in general, this representation, together with my co-authors, earnestly ask for the approval and adoption of this resolution. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I now move to open the period of interpolation and debate.
There is now a motion to
Mister Speaker, manifestation?
Yes, what is the manifestation?
This is not uh this is not an interpolation, Mister Speaker. Would just like to manifest on the uh manifestation of uh MP Jet Lim regarding the uh apparently ultra virus act. Uh he alleged in naming the airport of uh Tawi of Sangasanga to to uh to Tawi Tawi Airport. I believe, Mister Speaker, that it's not a matter for us to uh to deal with considering that law has already been passed uh in the previous years by the Regional Legislative Assembly and and uh unless repealed or declared or another law is passed by the Bangsa Moro Parliament, that law continues to be operative and uh I think it's high time that it should be implemented by the uh by the concerned uh agencies named in the proposed resolution. And it remains valid unless questioned in the proper venue, Mister Speaker. That is my manifestation, Mister Speaker.
Thank you for the manifestation, uh. Thank you for the manifestation. That manifestation finds place in the resolution.
At Lim is that at the time of the passage of that Muslim Mindanao Autonomy Act,
The Ka'ap was still...
The Ka'ap was not transferred yet, the land side even of airport operations was not transferred yet to the Bangsamoro.
So how do you cure such a deceptive law? What is the pleasure of the gent- of MOTC?
On the first place, Mr., I will comment on the statement away ago that it is ultra virus.
Wala pa tayo sa interpolation and debate.
On the first place, Mr. Speaker, there is no ultra virus because under Republic Act 9054 and 6734, renaming a place that is not including on the power of the Ka'ap to name a place. As a matter of fact, Mr. Speaker, during our time in the Regional Assembly, we attempt to name ourang airport to Datogodin Sinswat Airport during that time, Mr. Speaker. So, there is no disturbance. Secondly, Mr. Speaker, the act is not land void or void abiniso. It is not void from the beginning because the Assembly act in the performance of their duty. So there is a regularity of performance under the statutory construction. There was there was
Assumption of regularity.
The assumption of the regularity of the performance of your official function.
You are saying there was no serious infirmity.
Yes, that's right, Mr. Speaker.
It does not imprint on the jurisdiction of the Ka'ap.
Precisely, Mr. Speaker. Precisely, Mr. Speaker. With your respect to my loading, MP Jan Jet Lim, Anthony Lim from Sulu and Tawi-Tawi, with your respect to him. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
It was clarified because that is not posing that as an objection. So therefore, all manifestations are recorded and noted by the Chair.
Noted. Just one.
Lorena is raising his virtual hand to be followed by MP Jet Lim, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from Sulu, Jose Lorena, is recognized to be followed by MP Jet Lim.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Just a manifestation.
Oh, you are in London.
74 and 95 Grants the Autonomous Region.
He is in London. Please improve your video, your audio.
Mr. Speaker, can you hear me? Mr. Speaker?
Wow.
Mr. Speaker?
Sana ol.
Can you hear me, Mr. Speaker?
Hindi maganda ang audio mo jo.
Okay, I'm another place.
Ganda lalaki ka na para 'yung audio hindi.
Just text it, Mr. Speaker for records.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Speaker, reading of both Republic Act 64 and 954, jurisdiction over airports, it's the authority to name airports or the arm at that time. So the law is really within the Republic of the bar under both Republic Act 6734 and that's all, Mr. Speaker.
That's within the compet- you're saying that is within the competence of the arm then? And now the bar?
Under both law, under Republic Act.
Under 6734, the original organic act and the expanded act, organic act 9054.
Yes, even if it fiction is still with Ka'ap because that is within places within important the transport place, airports and that's all, Mr. Speaker.
Your manifestation, Mr. MP Joe Lorena.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Brother Jet Lim. Before we allow the sponsor to jet, hindi na ito interpolation and debate. Manifestation pa rin ba yan?
Yeah, anyway, just to be clear, Mr. Speaker.
Interpolation and debate para lively.
I submit to the wisdom of the speaker. Thank you.
Okay. There was a motion earlier for the opening of the period of interpolation and debate. And Julis seconded. Do I hear any objection? Chair hears none. Same is hereby approved. The period of interpolation and debate is now open. Jet Lim is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa ala barakatuh. At the outset, I reiterate, I am not alleging that the MMA 324 was ultra virus. I'm just laying out to the plenary and also for us to determine why was it not implemented in the first place. That's why I suggested maybe there was something something wrong or something some infirmity in the law that prevented Ka'ap from implementing the renaming of the airport from Sangasanga to Tawi-Tawi Airport. I hope the plenary does not misconstrue me or misinterpret me as objecting to the to the resolution.
You want the sponsor to answer?
If he wills.
Question, yes. Yes, Mr. Speaker, can I reply?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, will the proponent, does he know if the reason why MMA Act 324 not implemented when it was enacted in 2016 or 2016? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, based-
The sponsor may answer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Based on my legal research and due diligence during that time we were preparing this resolution, Mr. Speaker, we recognize that the naming of airports involve international bodies as well as the national and therefore it requires political will for that to be implemented. So going back, this was a regional law, but the bodies that name the airports are actually international in scope and thus the full commitment of the Ka'ap is required. And that is why we see that a resolution such as this will help become the basis of the Bangsamor to coordinate with the international bodies that is in charge of the naming, Mr. Speaker.
Are you satisfied, Mr. MP Jet Lim?
A few more questions, Mr. Speaker. Is the proponent-
Nawala ang audio mo. Nawala.
Mr. Speaker? Hello?
Okay.
Mr. Speaker, may I know if-
Wala na naman audio mo, Jet.
Mr. Speaker, may I know if there was an official action or official reply from Ka'ap why their failure on their part to implement the MMA Act 324?
Ano 'yung audio?
Hello? Mr.? Secretariat, can you hear me?
The, the, in fact, it will all the more answer the question of the gentleman from Tawi-Tawi. So I think there is no harm that can be done and there is no legal impediment. And I think if the Parliament approves this, then it can move it further, Mr. Speaker, rather than just going back to the start and not having this acted upon, Mr. Speaker.
MP Jet Lim?
Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Yeah. My last question was, was there an official communication from Ka'ap then? Why it was not able to implement the MMA Act 324 renaming Sangasanga to Tawi-Tawi Airport?
The sponsor may answer.
Mr. Speaker, there is no official communication, but that is why this resolution is an expression of reiteration, Mr. Speaker, that this law already be implemented. As I had mentioned, this was the request of the political leadership of Tawi-Tawi. That is why this resolution was made. In fact, another bill was prepared by MP Mawalil, also of Tawi-Tawi, upon request also of Governor Mangsali that the Tawi-Tawi Airport be named already as Tawi-Tawi Airport instead of Sangasanga Airport. In fact, an urban legend, when we were there, stated that once upon a time, a pilot set the airport to be Tawi-Tawi Airport, but unfortunately, it was set to Mapun Airport. And upon continuously flying, his fuel got diminished and the airplane crashed. That is the importance of names of airports. That is number one. Aside from number two, that the political leadership wants the Tawi-Tawi Airport to become an international airport and to be recognized geographically already as the Tawi-Tawi Airport. As regards issues of non-improvementation, Mr. Speaker, I think this resolution as a reiteration would surely help things be moved forward.
That was your last question, as I understand it, MP Jet Lim?
Yeah, thank you, Minister. Again, I reiterate, I have no objection. As a matter of fact, I fully support that. It's just that if we have to move forward, we have to know what was the basis for non-improvementation, precisely my question. At any rate, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank the Speaker for recognizing my presence, albeit online. Thank you and thank you also to the proponent.
You are welcome. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the, our Deputy Speaker and the Minister of Transportation and Communications, MP Paisalin Tag.
The Deputy Speaker and Minister of MOTC is recognized. The Honorable Paisalin Popoy Tago.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Although my ministry is one of the ministry that will or agency that will implement this resolution if we approve this, my clarification lang ako sa proponent. Supposing, Mr. Speaker, we approve this resolution, automatic ma maninim na 'yung from Sangasanga Airport to Tawi-Tawi Airport.
Mr. Speaker, this resolution will become the reference of the Bangsamoro Ka'ap as well as the National Ka'ap that will coordinate with the international body that that formalizes the names. So there is an international body that actually changes the names because the names will reflect all over the world and it is only that specialized body that actually has the authority to change airport names. So essentially, this resolution will be the basis, aside from the original MMA Act, to be submitted to the National Ka'ap and the Bangsamoro Ka'ap that will together submit it to the international body that is in charge of formalizing the the names and the airport codes.
So, ibig sabi, Mr. Speaker, maski iapprove na't inito, hindi automatic na papalitan 'yung Sangasanga Airport to Tawi-Tawi Airport, it will go to the international body. Supposing, Mr. Speaker, that the international body did not want to name it as Tawi-Tawi Airport, what will happen now, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, I think the international body is is mechanical in nature. In short, the legislative act will come from the Philippines and the international body will act on the changing of names if based on their due diligence, the policy is already clear and it comes from the proper agencies in the Philippines.
So, meaning this resolution has specific effect international body to approve it and name it to another name, Sangasanga to Tawi-Tawi Airport.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. This would be the basis for the proper agencies to forward it to the to the international agencies in charge of naming the airport.
Kasi ang intindigo, Mr. Speaker, since I was saying away ago that I will be the one one of the agency that will implement this resolution, it is my thinking na papalitan kagad 'yung pangalan ng airport. Hindi pala, this resolution will be forwarded to an international body and that body, ano pangalan ng body?
There is a specific body, Mr. Chair. I think it's an international civil aviation organization because they are the one that provides in their computers a spaces of all airplanes worldwide. So, we need to be able to provide them the name and then they will have to adjust their computers to reflect the same so that all airplanes flying from abroad and within the Philippines will be able to see that name and code.
Yung mga codes, that is for the codes.
Yes, for the code and the name.
Pagbibili ka ng ticket, 'yung pal, piyak, 'yung sibo pasibo, sibo sipag, pagpupunta ka ng KL, Kuala Lumpur KL, 'yung mga codes, no?
Codes of the airport and the name.
That is purposely for the codes.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
But not for denying the naming of the airports.
Because it is computerized in nature, Mr. Speaker, they need to adjust it from the international civil aviation organization. It has to be in their database. So while we can change the name here, the proper coordination with the International Civil Aviation Organization must be made in order to, for it to have an international effect, Mr. Speaker.
Hey, Mr. Speaker, okay na, okay na. Anyway, Mr. Speaker, meron lang akong kontingamin itong Civil Aviation Authority of the Bangsamoro. It is Bangsamoro Authority pursuant to our administrative code, Bangsamoro Airport Authority. It is not Ka'ap. We need to-
It's not Ka'ap. It's
Bangsamoro
It's Baa.
Baa, Bangsamoro Airport Authority.
We agree, Mr. Speaker.
Noted. Julis noted. Thank you, Mr. Minister DS.
Mr. Speaker, I now move to terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
There is now a motion to terminate the period of interpolation and debate. Julis seconded. Do I hear any objection? Chair hears none. Same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, with just one amendment already introduced by Deputy Speaker Tago, particularly on-
Three-minute suspension. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I now move to open the period of amendment.
Uh, the, there is a motion to open the period of amendments and the, and period of amendment. Uh, do I hear any second? Duly seconded. Do I hear any objection? Chair hears none. Same is shared by approved. Period of amendments now open.
May we recognize Deputy Speaker and MOTC Minister Deputy Speaker Tago.
The Honorable Deputy Speaker and Minister of MOTC Paisalin Tago is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, to be consistent with the administrative code, I have a omnibus motion. All those statement that says Civil Aviation Authority of the Bangsa-Moro should be changed to Bangsa-Moro Airport Authority in consi- uh, in consonance with the provisions of the administrative code.
Bangsa-Moro?
Airport Au- Authority.
Airport Authority.
Uh, that is an omnibus motion. Palitan lahat 'yung nak- nagsasabi ng Civil Aviation Authority of the Bangsa-Moro.
There is an omnibus, omnibus motion to change Ka'ap to Baa uh, in all the uh, sentences and provisions of this resolution.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Accepted. Proposed amendments accepted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Uh, pursuant to the interpretation away lago, Mr. Speaker. Uh, since hindi pala, uh, hindi pala ang mag- primary to implement this resolution is the MOTC or the other agencies na sa international body. For the, Mr. Speaker, if the proponent will agree, uh, can we strike down the word to immediately and properly implement MMA Act number 324?
To assist in the implementation.
Uh, if the proponent will agree, Mr. Speaker. Kasi hindi pala immediate, immediate 'yung implementation nito kasi it depends on the international body as the others stated by the proponent away lago, Mr. Speaker.
Um, I think, Mr. Speaker, the, the MOTC uh, eh, and the Baa can now inform the International Civil Aviation Organization. So, um, what is your uh, uh?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, can we reword na lang?
Okay. What is your proposal? Uh,
Urging, urging the MOTC-
To facilitate the, the proper implementation.
Urging the, the MOTC to assist.
Oh. Anong body yun ipoprawa ditoong resolution?
International air, uh, the International Civil Aviation Organization and the International Airport Transport uh, Association.
Ay kaw.
Nandun sa resolved-
Uh, pwede na lang ilagay dyan na urging the stated agencies MOTC and the others to uh, immediately transmit this resolution uh, resolution to the, 'yung sinabi mong body for uh, for further or for appropriate action, for further action or appropriate action.
Unless uh, urging the MOTC and the Baa to immediately coordinate with the uh, International Civil Aviation Organization and International Airport Transportation A- Association for the implementation of this. So, uh, to coordinate with the uh, International Civil Aviation Organization, International Civil Aviation Organization, kama, and International Air Transport Association, International Airport, International Air Transport Association.
For the implementation of this resolution.
Yes, so, International Air Car Association for the implementation-
MMA Act number 324.
Of MMA Act 324.
Otherwise known as one.
Otherwise known as the
title of that law.
Otherwise known as the Act Changing the Name of uh, otherwise known as the Tawi-Tawi Airport Act of 2015.
Tawi-Tawi Act of 2015.
Otherwise known Tawi Act, okay. Period.
Oh.
Semi-colored.
Okay. Thank you, Minister. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member of the parliament who wishes to introduce an amendment, I move to terminate with the period.
Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
Um, okay, Mr. Speaker, there appears to be a colleague, MP Lim, uh, on Zoom who wishes to be recognized.
Are you still, are you just murmuring or you are talking?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a proposed amendment, uh, uh.
So, Mr. Speaker. Another proposed amendments. Si Jet Muna and then si Joe, Joe Lorena.
Thank you, Speaker, again for recognizing my virtual hand. Uh, first of all, uh, will the proponent uh, 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 agree to amend instead of the word calling on, uh, instead use a request to observe a little, uh, to observe courtesy among uh, fellow members of parliament instead of calling out which is actually uh, sounding uh, a little less courteous, if I may.
So, what is the requesting?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Accepted. Any more amendments?
Uh, one more, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, if the proponent will ag- agree, uh, instead of uh, 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 will the proponent agree if he can uh, change the result, title of the resolution to requesting the Ministry of Transportation, Communication, Baa to ascertain the cause of the non-implementation and of MMA Act number 324 and thereafter proceed, um, did the secretariat get my proposal?
Can you restate your proposal, gentleman?
Yeah. Requesting the Ministry of Transportation to ascertain the cause of the non-implementation of MMA Act number 324.
Non-improvement. Pero paano? Oo, oo. Oh.
Mr. Speaker, uh, I'm afraid that will change the tenor of the resolution. Um, and perhaps that can be another resolution that can be filed by the gentleman from the Tawi-Tawi. But uh, as of now, if we can just uh, um, li- uh, limit to the one subject matter rule. Anyway, that will uh, come out in the process of the coordination of the uh, MOTC and the Baa. So I'm afraid we cannot accept the proposed amendment to the title, Mr. Speaker, because of the uh, limit on the one subject matter rule. Number two, it totally is different from the were asked clauses and might be appropriate for another resolution in the future that may be filed by the gentleman from the Tawi, from Tawi-Tawi.
Well, uh, Mr. Speaker, that would be present. I have not yet finished my proposed amendment. Uh, actually from the title, I will go to the body but uh, uh, from this point, uh, I think uh, uh, the gentleman from Sulu is intent on retaining the title but uh, my simple request is to uh, replace the calling on is uh, to requesting which has already been uh, admitted. Uh, no more proposal, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, uh.
Mr. Speaker. Yes, the, the Honorable Gentleman, the from Sulu, MP Joe Lorena is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, if the good or in my friend from the ministry would allow an amendment to the already meant on the title for simplicity, I would propose that the, the requesting the Transportation and Communication and the Baa coordinate with appropriate agencies and in bodies for the effective of MMA Act number, uh, number 32, otherwise known as the Tawi-Tawi Airport Act 15. Uh, be brief, concise, allow the MOTC elbow room to facilitate uh, change the effect on of that particular MMA Act. The good sponsor invite the Transportation or early introduce the amendment is willing to accept for simplicity, uh, brevity. Mr. Me? Someone? Hello?
So is the proposed?
Okay. The amendment would be requesting the Ministry of Trans- and Communication and the Baa coordinate with appropriate national and international body implement effectively. Number 324, don't ask the Tawi-Tawi Airport Act of 2015. That would shorten every flexibility to the agency.
Your amendments, potol-potol lang dating mo, boss.
But I will repeat, uh, Mr. Speak. Resolution requesting the Ministry of Transport and Baa coordinate with agencies, with appropriate agencies and internec- is to effectively implement the Act 324 as the Tawi-Tawi Airport Act of 2015.
MMA, MMA Act 324.
That could give our agent and that could be brief, concise and that would give flexibility to coordinate, uh, request the appropriate.
We accept the proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Thank, uh, the good sponsor. Thank you.
May I be heard, MP Joe?
So, Mr. Speaker, with the amendments on the title, it will follow that the this positive portion will also reflect the same language, Mr. Speaker?
Yes. Yes. Dapat sana sa body tayo nakumpisa, hindi sa title, inulit na naman.
Yes.
So, next time, ano lang ah, reminder, we start.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, for the
Nandyan ka pa pala. And then the title, you amend the title last, that's the procedure, anyway, noted na yun.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, there being no other amendments introduced. We I move that we, uh, close, terminate the period of amendments.
The, there is a motion to terminate the period of amendments. Is there any, you'll seconded, is there any objection? Chair here is none, same is here by approve.
I move to approve proposed resolution number three three two, subject to style, Mister Speaker, and subject to the amendments.
May we ask The sponsor if he is amenable to including all those present here physically?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
To be part as co-author of this resolution?
Yes, Mister Speaker, uh, uh, all those present be part of the, uh, resolution.
All present to include those in the Zoom. So, Miss Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, uh, we have already approved The same, Mister Speaker, there's a pending Motion to approve, subject to style, Mister Speaker.
The, there is now a motion to approve resolution, uh, three three two. Uh, subject to style, is there any objection? You'll seconded, is there any objection? Chair here is none, same is here by approve.
Next, Mister Speaker, it's proposed resolution number
Congratulations, MP Don Loong.
Proposed resolution number three six six, may we request the secretariat to please read the title and the author?
The se- the secretariat is directed to read Proposed Resolution three six six, the title, including the author and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution number three hundred and sixty-six entitled, Resolution condemning in the strongest possible sense The tragic death of Edgel A. Tan, requesting the appropriate agencies of the Bangsa Moro, Bangsa Moro Government To expedite the conduct of their investigation in order to serve Justice to the buried family of the deceased. Author, Member of the Parliament, Susana Anayatin.
Majority.
Mister, Mister Speaker, may we also request the secretariat to please read proposed resolution number three six Three seven six, which also have a sim- has a similar, uh, subject matter.
The secretariat is directed to read proposed Resolution three seven six To include the author and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution number three hundred and seventy-six entitled Resolution condemning to the highest level, the gruesome killing of Mister Edgel A. Tan And urging the Ministry of Public Order and Safety, MPOS, Philippine National Police Probar And the National Bureau of Investigation, NBI BARM And other concerned agencies to conduct an immediate and impartial investigation. Authors, Member of the Parliament, Cadell Sinolinding Junior, Si Eliah Dumama Alba, Susana Anayatin, Ahmad Abbas, Eddie Ali, Suato Ismael, Frailen Mendoza, Michael Mittimbang, Chapara Apollo, Michael Matalam, Rasol Mitmug Junior, Dan Asnawi, Mosber Alaudin, and Tawakal Mittimbang.
Mister Speaker, I move that we treat Both proposed Resolution numbers three six six and three seven six as simple resolutions, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to treat proposed Resolution three six six and proposed Resolution three seven six As a simple resolution, do I hear any second? You'll seconded, do I hear any objection? Chair here is none, same is here by approve.
I, I move to consolidate proposed Resolution Numbers three six six and three seven six for purposes of deliberation, Mister Speaker.
There is now a motion to, to consolidate two resolution, three six six and three seven six For purposes of deliberation, is there any second? You'll seconded, do I hear any objection? Chair here is none, same is here by approve. Proceed.
May we request, uh, one of the principal authors, Mister Speaker, MP Susana Anayatin, with the information that the principal author of the other resolution has yielded his time In favor of, uh, MP Anayatin, Mister Speaker.
So isa na lang magsalita. The lady from Cotabato City is recognized, MP Susana Anayatin.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I am from Magindano del Norte.
And Magindano del Norte.
Mister Speaker And, uh, Floor leader and fellow Members of the Parliament. Here is the policy of the state To value the dignity and, eh, of every human person And guarantee full respect for human rights. That under section five, article two Of the nineteen eighty-seven Philippine Constitution, The maintenance of peace and order, the protection of life, Liberty and property, and the promotion of the general welfare are essential For the enjoyment by all, by all the people of the blessings of democracy. In the third week of July twenty twenty-three, Social media flooded with disheartening news Regarding the tragic death of Edgel A. Tan, a thirty-four-year-old male Cotabatenyo. According to Police Major Michael Yap, In view of the marks all over the body, the deceased suffered torture before his life was taken. It was July eighteen twenty twenty-three when Edgel was reportedly missing, as stated by the Cotabato City Police Station two. And a few days after, his family confirmed that it was Edgel's body That had been found on July twenty, twenty twenty-three Floating along the coast of Balabagan Lanau del Sur by a certain fisherman. Mister Speaker, nobody has the right to take an innocent person's life. Even worse, to subject such person to torture. This inhumane act is against the law, morality and religion. It should be condemned in the strongest possible sense Because it is unimaginable and beyond the nature of humans to perform such horrendous acts. Mister Speaker, the BARM has been fighting for its cause since time immemorial. They have been fighting for justice, basic human rights and freedom To live in their own native land without fear. Therefore, Mister Speaker, the people should be protected of their rights and serve justice To those who are deprived of it. Hence, this resolution. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, gentlewoman From, uh, Magindano del Norte. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, um, we
The floor leader.
I move to open the period of interpolation, Mister Speaker.
There is now a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate. Is there any second? You'll seconded, is there any objection? Chair here is none. Same is here by approve. Period of interpolation and debate is now open.
Mister Speaker, uh, may we recognize MP Jam Ramos?
MP?
Jam Ramos, Jamila Ramos.
MP Jam Ramos is recognized from Lanau del Sur. And?
Magindano del Norte and Pikit SGA, Mister Speaker.
Grabe, Magindano del Norte.
Yes. Mister Speaker.
Proceed first.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, para sa kalaman ng lahat, ako po ay Tagakabuntalan, magindanong aking ina, at gayun din, ako din po ay pinanganak sa Pikit Cotabato SGA.
Okay.
Now, thank you, Mister Speaker, um, gusto ko pong, uh, it parating sa ating good proponent, na ako po ay suporta sa kanyang resolution. In fact, gusto kong hingin ang kanyang permiso na maging paten ang resolution na ito Dahil naniliwala po ako na bilang mga Members ng Parliament, na pinagkatiwalaan po tayo Nang kapakanan ng ating mga constituents sa, uh, BARM Ay, uh, dapat ay ang mga ganitong pangyayari ay ating maiiwasan. At sa pamamagitan ng pagpapasa ng mga, uh, legislative measures, no, that would Give protection and security to our Bangsa Moro constituents. Gusto ko lang pong itanong sa ating, uh, butihing, uh, Proponent, kung ano na po ba ang status, kung meron na po bang, uh, nahuli Uh, suspect, uh, para sa
Ito ay, uh, bibigay ng kabuyang tatlong tali-bubisyo, kung sino man ang makakatulog Sa maaring salinig sa nagalang krimen. Uh, ano po ba ang pwedeng sa kini ng forum pwedeng maitulog ng Bangsa Moro government, particularly ang ating Bangsa Moro Parliament sa nagalang, uh, na krimen? Ang mga prayer po natin is, uh, investigation ng Ministry of Public Order and Safety And if it's consolidated the two resos, kasabi ko 'yung National Bureau of Investigation Na nirerequest na mag further investigate sa aso ito. Thank you, Mister Speaker, yun ako at ang ganun, at, uh, pano lang mas ma- ma- magbigyan ng emphasis 'Yung reinforcement ng Bangsa Moro government para sa protection and security, no, and ano
Protection and security, no, and ano, uh, gusto ko pong magpropose ng amendment at a later time, Mister Speaker, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, madam. The floor leader.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize MP Don Loong, who also Also wishes to interpolate.
MP Don
To this, uh, resolution. Uh, but as a foundation for my proposed amendment later, I'd like to make a manifestation that on August nine, one week ago, A news article stated that An average of three people are getting killed every two days in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw. A police data cited That BARM is seeing a daily average of one point six murders or homicides Resulting to three hundred forty deaths from January to July thirty-one. Magindano del Norte stands out as the province with the highest number of killings within BARM Recording seventeen cases In the Todinsin Suat Town alone. Mister Speaker, the figure shows that an urgent need for comprehensive measures To address the alarming trend and enhance the safety of residents in the region. Mister Speaker, I therefore fully support this resolution As the absence of a call for coordinated government effort And attention to such incidents indirectly allows This situation to flourish in a culture of impunity that has plagued the region for a long time And gives evil elements in our midst the audacity to inflict the silence Uh, of the graves on their targets. So I will reserve my right to, uh, propose, uh, an additional were-ask later, Mister Speaker.
That was just a manifestation?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mister Speaker, we now move to, uh, terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
There is now a motion to terminate the period of interpolation and debate, do I hear any second? You'll seconded, is there any objection? Chair here is none, same is here by approve.
I move I now move to open the period of amendment, Mister Speaker, starting with MP Ramos, uh, to be followed by MP Loong.
There is now a mo- the, the period of amendments is now open, uh, MP Jam Ramos is recognized to be followed by MP Don Loong.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, uh, Gusto ko lang pong magpropose ng additional were-ask provision Uh, sa first were-ask nos, at, uh, ito po yun. Were-ask, section one, article three of the nineteen eighty-seven Constitution Provides that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty or property without due process of law. I believe, Mister Speaker, 'yung specific section na ito Uh, kung ito ay may include sa resolution, ay marinforce na 'yung commitment ng Bangsa Moro government In ensuring that every person's right to life, Liberty and property is respected, Mister Speaker. Uh, Mister Speaker, may I also
Resolution?
I also request the other author, Uh, Dr. Sinolinding To join me In accepting whatever, uh, amendments will there be.
The MP Dr. Jojo Sinolinding is like Requested to assist Madam, uh, Susana.
May I request for the recognition of the Dr. Sinolinding? Mister Speaker.
May I be recognized?
Uh, MP Doc Jojo Sinolinding is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, Bismillah, Rahman Rahim. Uh, with respect to the proposed amendment of the good, uh, gentle lady from Magindano del Norte, Pikit and Lanau del Sur. Um, in the Resolution three seven seven, in the second where as It reads, section one, article three of the Bill of Rights states that, in quotation, No person shall be deprived of life, comma, liberty, comma, or property without due process of law, comma, Nor shall any person be denied the equal protection of laws, unquote. Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker.
So I, I suggest, uh, Mister Speaker, that, uh, there's no need to amend because These two resolutions shall be consolidated as suggested by the floor leader.
So it is found in the other resolution that we are consolidating. So it's present, madam.
With that, Mister Speaker, uh, sinusando na ma siya sa pangalawang, uh, resolution that it co-consolidate siya. I withdraw my proposed res- um, proposed amendment, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, madam.
Yes, uh.
The floor leader.
MP Don Loong.
MP Don Loong is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, just to reiterate the call for coordinated government effort, Mister Speaker, I propose a were-ask. Um, I wonder if the secretariat can already put it?
Are you in possession of the two resolutions? Gentlemen and ladies, okay?
Whereas the absence of a call for coordinated government effort And attention to such incidents indirectly allows to flourish A culture of impunity that has plagued the region for a long time And gives evil elements in our midst the audacity to in- to continue to inflict Violence Amidst the silence That has plagued the region for a long time and gives the evil elements in our midst The audacity to continue to inflict violence As for a long time and gives Evil elements in our midst the audacity to continue to inflict violence For a long time and gives
Ano itong timeframe ng long time? Ten years, five years, one year? The sponsor may help?
Uh.
Ano itong period ng long time?
Like the region It is, uh, It only means, Mister Speaker, that it has been there for, uh,
One month, two months, three months, one year?
Yes, it could even be decades, Mister Speaker.
Decades?
Because of our, uh, situation of being in the, um, Conflict-affected area, Mister Speaker. Uh, this has been a situation that we have, uh, long wanted to, uh, to address.
One, so do you agree?
Unless if you would like to remove the word, uh, with the, we can remove the long time, Mister Speaker, if, uh, That, that might give an, a wrong impression, which has plagued the region.
And we're painting the region in a bad light.
That has been a challenge in the region, perhaps, okay, to, uh, allows To flourish culture of impunity that has been a challenge in the region. You can remove the long time. Been a challenge in the region. Remove the for a long time. Remove the "for a long time". That has been a challenge in the region and gives evil elements in our midst the audacity to to continue to inflict violence. Remove the last words. To continue to inflict violence. That is my amended proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, that no longer has the "for a long time" which might be misconstrued, but it just calls on the coordinated government effort to address this challenge that we have in the region. Kala ko ba ikoconsolidate na to subject to style?
Wala ba ito sa dalawang resolution? 'Yung same idea pero hindi exactly the same? Similar but not the same? Wala ba?
Mr. Speaker?
Yes?
We have provided enough and sufficient for us so in being with the government as well, we do not accept the proposed amendment.
The proposed amendment is not accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any more amendments?
There being no other amendments, Mr. Speaker. I now move to terminate the period of amendments.
There is now a motion to terminate the period of amendments. There any second? Second, Julis seconded, is there any objection? Chair hears none, same is here by approve.
I move to approve the consolidated proposed resolution numbers 366 and 376, subject to style.
There is now a motion to consolidate proposed resolutions 366 and 376, subject to style, Julis seconded, is there any objection? Chair hears none, same is here by approve.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number 369. May we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors?
Last na ba to? Wala time arrienda? Okay, we... The secretariat is directed to read proposed resolution 369 to include the author and co-authors.
Proposed resolution number 369, the title, the resolution joining the Ministry of Environment, Natural Resources, and Energy. Menre, to exigently determine and establish the boundaries of the Ligawasan Mars within the special area of jurisdictional authority of the Bangsa Moro Regional Government in coordination with the local governments of the provinces of Putabato and Sultangkudarat in Region 12, Sok Sarjen, which also occupy minor portions of the Mars for the best interest of the Bangsa Moro region without jeopardy to the two provinces mentioned. Author, member of the parliament, Muhammad Kery Antao. Co-authors, members of parliament, Suway Boranon, Basir Uto, Tawakal Mitimbang, and Mujib Abu.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed resolution number 369 to the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Energy.
There is now a motion to refer proposed resolution 369 to the Committee on Energy and Natural Resources?
Environment, Natural Resources, and Energy.
The... Is there any second? Oh, amma, let's apply a name, man. There any objection? Chair hears none, same is here by approve.
Mr. Speaker, may we request for a 20-minute break?
Are you? The request of the floor leader is most welcome. 20 minutes break?
Good afternoon once again, Mr Speaker. We are now on item number six in the order of business. May I request the Secretary General to read proposed resolution three seven seven, including its title and purpose?
The Secretariat is hereby directed to read proposed resolution three seven seven, reading the title including the author and co-authors.
Proposed resolution number three hundred seventy seven entitled resolution condemning in the strongest possible terms the senseless kill senseless and brutal killing of medical practitioner Dr. Marivik Thalyo and urging the Cotabato Regional Medical Center to undertake necessary steps to ensure the safety and security of its personnel and clients. Authors members of parliament Kadeel Sinulinding Junior, Sya'ila Yha Dumama Alba, Susana Ngetin, Ahmad Abbas, Eddie Ali, Suwarto Ismail, Prohle Mendoza, Michael Metimbang, Chapara Polo, Michael Matalam, Rasol Mitmug Junior, Dan Asnavi, Mosver Eladin, and Tawakal Metimbang.
Mr Speaker, I move that we treat proposed resolution three seven seven as a simple resolution.
It's a motion to treat proposed resolution three seven seven duly seconded. Any there any objection? Care here is none. Same is hereby approved.
Mr Speaker, I move may I request Dr. Kadeel M. Sinulinding for his brief manifestation.
MP Dr. Jojo Sinulinding is recognized.
Bismillahirohmanirohim. Alhamdulillahi was salaatu was salaamu. Ala rasulullahi wala alihi wasabi ajma'in amabad. Mr. Speaker, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leader, Deputy Floor Leaders, fellow honorable members of the parliament, distinguished colleagues, visitors, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. A pleasant afternoon to everyone. I stand today to sponsor resolution number three seven seven entitled resolution condemning in the strongest possible terms the senseless killing as senseless and brutal killing of Dr. Marivik Thalyo, a medical practitioner like me and urging the Cotabato Regional Medical Center to undertake necessary steps to ensure the safety and security of its personnel and clients. Mr. Speaker, no one has the right to take away human life but our creator Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Inna lillahi wa inna ilaihi ra'jiun along with the co-authors and honorable members of this parliament, we extend our sympathy and condolences to the family. In verse thirty two of the Quran, it provides that we ordained for the children of Israel that if anyone slew a person, unless it be for murder or for spreading mischief in the land, it would be as if he slew the whole people. unless it be for murder or for spreading mischief in the land, it would be as if he slew the whole people. And if anyone saved a life, it would be as if he saved the life of the whole people." and quote. Mr. Speaker, I personally condemn to the strongest possible terms the gruesome killing of Dr. Telio, a person sworn to save and defend lives except hers. No one deserves to die like this. It is so tragic to be murdered in your own office, more so by someone you trust. Dr. Marivik Telio is an obstetrician-gynecologist practitioner and a wife of former Provincial Police Director of Maguindanau, Retired Police General Agustin Telio, ordered missing on July twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three. She was last seen at the Cotabato Regional Medical Center compound based off CCTV footage obtained by the city PNP. Days after, on July twenty-seventh, the body of Dr. Telio was buried in a shallow grave within the area to City Medical Society building inside the CRMC compound. Generally confessed and admitted murdering the doctor where it happened right inside possible sense. Whatever is the reason that compelled the murderer to do it, I cannot fathom he did such a gruesome act in this helpless doctor. In the city of Cotabato, for the record, she is the second doctor to be murdered inside the office. I cannot imagine how painful it is for the family and I cannot even imagine the anguish of the family is experiencing. In behalf of the members of the Parliament, I strongly urge the Cotabato Regional Medical Center to undertake necessary steps to ensure the safety and security of its personnel and clients. For this reason, I call on our distinguished colleagues to support the adoption of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Wa billahit taufiq wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuhu.
Wa billahit taufiq wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuhu. The floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate. Is there any objection? Is there any second? Duly seconded. Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Same is hereby approved. Period of interpolation and debate is now open. Meron ba magtatanim? Wala na.
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpolator, I move to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate.
There's a motion to terminate the period of interpolation and debate. Duly seconded. Chair here is no objection. Same is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I... Mr. Speaker, I move that all members of the Parliament who are present here, and including those in the Zoom, be included as main authors.
There any objection? If the sponsor willing?
Gladly accepts, Mr. Speaker.
Gladly accepted. The chair hears no objection. Same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve Resolution 377.
We have to dispense already or terminate the
I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker.
The period of amendments.
Yes, I move to terminate the period of
Yep, open and then terminate immediately. The period of amendments is open. Is there anybody who wish to propose any amendments to the resolution? Chair here is none. Same is hereby approved. Move to approve.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve Resolution Number 377.
There is a motion to approve Resolution Number 377. Duly seconded. Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Proposed Resolution is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Speaker, we are now on item seven of the... in the Order of Business. May I request the Secretary General to read Proposed Resolution Number 383 together with Proposed Resolution 387 as both resolutions covers the same subject matter, Mr. Speaker.
Item number seven and item number nine.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
In the agenda, the Secretariat is directed to read Proposed Resolution 383, including the title and authors and co-authors and to include Proposed Resolution 387. Same is dealing with the same subject matter practically. Secretariat is directed to read.
Proposed Resolution Number 383 entitled "Resolution Congratulating Jamal Rahmat Pandey of Planau del Sur for Winning Gold Medal in Badminton Secondary Category and Commending the Athletes and Coaches Who Participated in the Palarong Pambansa 2023, thereby giving honor and pride to the Bangsamoro people." Authors: Members of the Parliament: Marjani Makasalong, Eddy Ali, Norrelo Missuari, and Rasool Mitmug Jr. Co-authors: Members of the Parliament: Randal Parcasio, Sid Sheikh, Abdulajisaminuddin, Dan Martin Kahalan, Ali Montaha Babau, Abdul Wahab Pak, Basit Abbas, Susana Niyatin, Mary Ann Argadong, Michael M. Timbang, Ali Salik, Hatimil Khasan, Albakir Jikiri, Mohan Magkeliantau, and Abila Margarita Pangandami. Proposed Resolution Number 387 entitled "Resolution Congratulating the Delegates of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanau Barn in the Sixty-third Palarong Pambansa, also known as the Palaro 2023, held in Marikina City, Philippines." Authors: Members of the Parliament: Abdouma Hasim and Eddy Ali. Co-authors: Members of the Parliament: Albakir Jikiri, Suarto Ambulutu, Dan Martin Kahalan, Ali Montaha Babau, Michael M. Timbang, Abila Margarita Pangandami, Lanang Ali Jr., Basit Abbas, Abdulajisaminuddin, Chaparapolo Mikail Matalam, Susana Niyatin, Dan Asnawi, and Ali Sulaiman.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consolidate PR 383 and with PR 387. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion to consolidate PR 377 and PR 387. Subject to style, duly seconded. Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize MP Marjani.
You now move to open the period of interpolation.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation. Yeah, for a brief manifestation of the main author.
Brief manifestation. From the sponsor, the Honorable Sultan Makasalong. Please proceed.
Wa bilaikum sir. Thank you very much. Audzubillahiminasyaitan wa jeeim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahwabihiinasainu alaihinatawakkal amabad. Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuhu and very good afternoon. I hope very good afternoon pa po sa ating lahat. But before I proceed, please allow us to share a very short, a very short clip of Jamal Rahmat Pandey taken during the championship game of Badminton Boys Secondary Category before he commenced
Before you proceed, may we ask the Secretariat to flash the resolution on the screen.
Layong ano, 'yung video clip. That's twenty-four twenty-four kasi 'yun ang willing niya kaya and state na is shake han 'yung opponent. Di na lang naman shake han. Anyway, honorable members of the Bangsamoro Parliament, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, once again, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuhu. It is with great honor and pride that I stand before you today to celebrate the accomplishment of a fellow Bangsamoro and a fellow Maranau, Jamal Rahmat Pandey, who has brought pride to the Bangsamoro people by winning a gold medal in Badminton Secondary Category at the recently concluded Palarong Pambansa 2023. Palarong Pambansa is an annual event where student athletes from different regions in the Philippines compete to showcase their skills in various sports discipline. This year, the event was held in Marikina City last July twenty-nine to August five, two thousand twenty-three. Seventeen athletic associations participated in the event and the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region proved to be a strong contender, bagging two gold, two silver, and two bronze medals. Jamal Pandey, one of the recipients of the two gold medals, is a native of Po'ona Bayabau, Planau del Sur, who has brought pride not only to his school, Ragayan National High School, Planau del Sur, but also the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region. He is a son of a local leader and a former secretary of the Department of Health during the defunct ARMM, Dr. Lampa Pandey. Jamal did not only win a gold medal in Badminton at Palarong Pambansa 2023, but he was also one of the participants representing the entire Philippines for the Asia Junior Sports Games 2022 in Japan. This achievement further adds to Jamal's credentials. Representing our country in an international event is a manifestation of Jamal's skills and dedication. His efforts to constantly improve his craft have not only made him a recognized athlete in the Philippines, but also a respected player on the international stage. I would also like to commend his coach, Aisa May Minam Panduma, for her hard work in training and mentoring Jamal. Also deserving of commendation are all the athletes and coaches who participated in this year's Palarong Pambansa. It takes great courage and hard work to compete such a high level and your dedication has not gone unnoticed. I also want to recognize the Bangsamoro government through the Ministry of Higher... Basic Higher and Technical Education laid by our Minister, Ser Mohager Vekbal, and its Schools Division Superintendent for its unwavering support and efforts to ensure that our athletes had the best possible support during the Palarong Pambansa 2023. Maraming salamat. Your commitment to providing the necessary resources and facilities is vital for nurturing and developing the skills of young athletes to compete on a national level and even in the international. It bolsters the commitment of supporting young people and promoting sports development. I want to emphasize that sports play a vital role in shaping communities. This promotes discipline, camaraderie, and respect. It helps build community and fosters a sense of belongingness among individuals. Most importantly, it teaches us valuable life lessons such as perseverance, teamwork, and sportsmanship. May this resolution inspire our Bangsamoro athletes and young people to push harder and excel in their chosen pursuits. Congratulations again and mabuhay ang Bangsamoro. Wa billahit taufiq wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuhu.
The floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate. Of course, the other sponsor of the other resolution may jointly answer any proposed amendments.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize MP Loong.
MP Don Loong is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to express a doubt set my support to this resolution, Mr. Speaker, and would just like to raise some points in preparation for some proposed amendments later on. I'd just like to inquire, Mr. Speaker, considering that the Bangsamoro Badminton player has won in the national level, has this been considered already by the Bangsamoro Sports Commission that Badminton is a sport where Bangsamoro athletes have a comparative advantage and therefore must be included in their strategic plan to support this sport, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. I am not speaking in behalf of the Bangsamoro Sports Commission, but we can presume that Badminton is one of the games that I think the BSC should be promoting with the young people, especially with the young people.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. With that, I just reserve my right to propose an amendment specifically aware us that will state that the accomplishment of Mr. Pandey will serve as an inspiration and an example for other athletes in the Bangsamoro region.
This representation, Mr. Speaker, is very much willing to improve the said resolution.
I ask both gentlemen on the floor. I ask both gentlemen on the floor to read over the two proposed resolutions. The idea that maybe that the gentleman may be proposing, they have been included there already. We read the body of the resolution. Tignan niyo na lang para pagdating ng amendments. Nandyan na, no need for amendment.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member of the Parliament who wish to interpolate, I move to terminate the period of interpolation.
To terminating the period of interpolation and debate.
And debate, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Is there any second? Duly seconded. Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve
To open the period of amendments. Wala na bang amendment? There is a motion to open the period of amendments. Is there any second? Duly seconded. The motion is approved, but period of amendments is now open.
May we recognize again MP Engineer Don Loong.
MP Don Loong is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In compliance to the suggestion of the speaker, I conferred with the author and hereby propose this whereas whereas the accomplishment of Mr. Jamal Rahmat Pandey and all the Bangsamoro athletes with the support and direction of their respective coaches serve as an example for aspiring young athletes in the region and deserve recognition and praise from the Parliament. That is all my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker. No objection, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Any more amendments?
No more, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other amendment, I move to terminate the period of amendment.
There is a motion to terminate There is a motion to terminate the period of amendments. Is there any second? Second, you're listed seconded. Is there any objection? Chair here stands, same as here by approve. Move to-
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve uh, Resolution 383 and 387, subject to style.
There is a motion to approve Resolution 383 and 3-
387.
387. Uh, sub, sub, to approve and subject to style. Is there any objection? Chair here stands, same as here by approve. Congratulations to the sponsor.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, we are now on the last item in the order of business. Uh, may I, may I last two, but they will be consolidated. So, may I request the Secretary General to please read uh, Proposed Resolution 384 and uh, Proposed Resolution 388. May I request that they be read altogether as and move that we consolidate consideration of the two resolutions, considering that they cover the same subject matter.
There is a motion to consolidate two, two resolutions. 38, Proposed Resolution 384 and Proposed Resolution 388, subject to style. Is there any ob, second? You're listed seconded. There any objection? Chair here stands, same as here by approve. Secretariat is directed to read the proposed, two proposed res- two proposed resolutions.
Proposed Resolution Number 384, entitled "Resolution Congratulating Muhammad Nur Qasib, a native of Lanau del Sur for winning bronze medal in the International Chemistry Olympiad held at Zurich, Switzerland, thereby giving pride and honor to the Bangsa Moro people." Authors, members of the Parliament, Margiani Makasalong, Eddie Ali Norredamiswari, and Rasul Mituntulio. Co-authors, members of the Parliament, Rondal Parkasio, SideShake Abdulajisa Minudin, Den Martin Kahalan, Ali Montaha Babau Abdul Wahab Pak, Basit Abbas, Susana Najatin, Mary Ann Hernado, Michael Mitimbang, Ali Salik Hatimil Hassan, Albakil Jikiri, Muhammad Kelly Antao Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, Assem Edilangalan, and Rasul Ismail. Proposed Resolution Number 384, entitled "Resolution Congratulating and Commending Muhammad Nur Gumaos Qasib for His Exemplary Achievement in Winning a Bronze Medal in the 55th International Chemistry Olympiad 2023 and for Giving Pride and Honor to the Bangsa Moro People." Author, Member of the Parliament, Jamila Ramos. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Den Martin Kahalan, Susana Najatin, Michael Mitimbang, Amrosi Makatanong, Ali Montaha Babau, and Ali Shulaiman.
Mr. Speaker, may we um, open the period of interpolation? I move to open the period of interpolation.
There is now a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate. You're listed seconded. There any objection? Chair here stands, same as here by approve. Period of interpolation and debate is now open.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May we recognize again, uh, MP Sultan Dr. Margiani Mimbantas Makasalong.
Dr. Margiani Mimbantas Makasalong, Sultan is recognized.
Tomawan naman kayo. Anyway, last two resolution. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Once again, good afternoon, Honorable Speaker, esteemed members of this Parliament, ladies and gentlemen. It is with immense pride and joy that I stand before you today to congratulate and recognize someone who has brought honor to our nation and given us all reason to celebrate. This might be overdue, but today we are here to congratulate Muhammad Nur Qasib for winning a bronze medal at the International Chemistry Olympiad held in Zurich, Switzerland. For the information of everyone, International Chemistry Olympiad is an annual competition for the world's most talented chemistry student at secondary school level. Nations around the world send a team for four, of four students who are tested on their chemistry knowledge and skills in a practical laboratory exam and a written theoretical examination. And it is truly an honor to represent one's country and compete at such a prestigious event. Last July 16 to 2025, 2023, the 55th International Chemistry Olympiad was attended by 107 participants from 88 countries, one of which was the Philippines. It is with great pride that we can say that one of our own, Mr. Muhammad Nur Qasib, has brought home a bronze medal. It is an even greater honor to acknowledge that our fellow Bangsa Moro, Mr. Qasib, has been consistently bringing glory to our community by winning various international and national competitions such as the, the National Mathematics and Science Olympiad for primary school students in Xinjiang, China, and the Metro Bank Deep Eadma Challenge in the Philippines. Mr. Qasib also bagged the bronze medal at the 64th International Mathematical Olympiad held on July 2 in Japan, and silver medal at the 2019 South African International Mathematics Competitions. As we celebrate Mr. Qasib's achievement, let us also acknowledge the support of his parents, Dr. Rodin Qasib and Dr. Siti Nur Qasib, both natives of Marawi City, who were also victims of the Marawi Siege. Their support and guidance have undoubtedly contributed to the success of Mr. Muhammad. Mr. Qasib serves as a source of honor and pride of our region. His achievements will undoubtedly inspire numerous young Bangsa Moro individuals to strive for excellence in the field of science and technology. By recognizing and commending his noteworthy accomplishments, this Parliament will provide further encouragement for him and others to persistently pursue excellence and bring honor to our nation and to the Bangsa Moro people. It also signifies Bangsa Moro government's commitment to promoting excellence in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics education, and encouraging young people to pursue careers in science and technology. The acknowledgement of Mr. Qasib's achievements serves as an affirmation of the Bangsa Moro government's dedication to prioritizing science and technology. This aligns with our objective of fostering globally competitive individuals in the field of science and technology when we passed just recently the Act Establishing the Bangsa Moro Science High School System. The participation of BARM team in prestigious international competitions such as the ICO could also raise the profile of the region and its potential for scientific and educational advancement. Let us continue to support and empower young professionals and students in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region to reach their full potential and bring pride and honor to our region. Maraming salamat once again, and assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, before we proceed, may we also recognize the uh, main author of Resolution 384 for her brief manifestation? May we recognize MP Jamila D. Ramos.
MP Jamila, Jam Ramos is recognized.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Muli, uh, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Magadang hapon po sa ating mga kasama sa Parlamento, lalong-lalo ng ating dutihing Chief Minister. Nakasama po natin kanina uh, during Chief Minister's Hour. Ang ating Deputy Chief Ministers, Parliament Speaker, Attorney Pangalan Talindong, uh, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leaders, Deputy Floor Leaders, mga okestiales ng uh, Parliament, at ang aking mga kapwa. May akda ng Proposed Resolution Number 388. Uh, magadang hapon po sa atin lahat. I kinagaganak po pong ihain ang PR Number 388 na magbibigay pugay kay Muhammad Nur Gumaos Qasib, isang karaniwang kabataang Bangsa Moro na sa kabila ng kanyang murang edad na 70 taong gulang, ay uh, nagtagumpay na makakamit ang isang bronze medal sa prestigioso 55th International Chemistry Olympiad. Hitong nakaraang ika 16 hanggang 25 ng hulyo 2023. Siya ay isang maranaw na nagmula sa munisipyo ng Bayang at ganasi Lanau del Sur Farm, at ipinagmamalaking anak na Dr. Rodin Qasib at Dr. Siti Nur Gumaos Qasib. Bukod sa kanya napanalunang bronze medal, si Muhammad Nur Qasib ay may record ng tagumpay sa larangan ng mga pagsusulit at nagdala sa kanya ito na kahanga-hanga koleksyon ng hindi bababa sa 38 na mga dinto, pilak, at tangsong medalya mula sa mga internasyonal na kompetisyon at karagdagang 38 na medalya mula sa mga pambansang kompetisyon sa larangan ng mathematics, science, chemistry, physics, astronomy, at iba pa. Ang tagumpay ni Muhammad Nur Qasib ay hindi lamang sa kanya at sa kanyang pamilya, kundi ito ay isang tagumpay para sa buong Bangsa Moro. Tayo po ay lubos na nagagala at nagpapahalaga sa ganitong uri ng mga tagumpay. Ito po ay simbolo ng sipag, tiyaga, at husay ng ating mga kabataan. Sa kanyang pagsali at tagumpay sa naturang kompetisyon, ipinakita ni Muhammad Nur Qasib ang malasakit sa kanyang pag-aaral, ang dedikasyon sa kanyang propisyon at ang malasakit sa kanyang reyon. Siya po ay napabalas ng mataas na kalidad ng edukasyon na taglay ng mga kabataang Bangsa Moro. Uh, Mr. Speaker, naisko rin pong uh, kunin ng pagkakataon na ito na ipanawagan sa atin na agadang maipasa na ang mga nakabinding uh, paano kala para iinstitutionalize ang pormal na pagkilala, uh, pagsuporta, at pagbibigay ng pabuya para sa ating mga Bangsa Moro achievers na siyang maghihikayat sa ating mga kababayan Bangsa Moro, lalong-lalo na ang ating mga kabataan na magsumikap dahil ang dito ang kanilang Bangsa Moro government na humikilala at sumusuporta sa kanilang tagumpay at patuloy na pagnago. Kaya muli, uh, Mr. Speaker, naisko pong ibigay ang aking tausgusong pasasalamat kay Muhammad Nur Gumaos Qasib para sa kanyang natataming tagumpay at inspirasyon ay binabahagi sa atin. Sa mga kabataang Bangsa Moro, lagi natin tandaan ng inyong tagumpay, ang, ay tagumpay ng buong komunidad sa pagkakaisa at sama-sama pagsusumikap makakamit mo natin ang isang mas maundat na Bangsa Moro, Inshallah. Maraming salamat, mabuhay Bangsa Moro. Wa billah taufik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Wa alaikumussalam. The floor leader.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
The, there is a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate. You're listed seconded. There any objection? Chair here stands, same as here by approve.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, may we once again recognize MP Don Loong.
MP Don Loong from Sulu is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, I support this uh, resolution, Mr. Speaker, but just uh, some comments. Number one, um, may we know from which high school uh-
Ikap mo na, wala pang nakatayo na ano, sasagot sa'yo. Kayong dalawang sponsors pwede na magsama.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I would just like to inquire if from which high school uh, Mr. Muhammad Nur Qasib graduated from?
Uh, Philippine Science High School at the Region 10, located in Balloy, Lanau del Norte.
Yes, I was wondering if it would be useful to include that as one of the whereas's to emphasize the importance of having a Philippine Science High School in the Bangsa Moro, Mr. Speaker?
No objection, Mr. Speaker. Would be very glad to accept any amendments in due time.
Yes, uh, and also to be clarified, if the venue was in Zejing or in Zhejiang? Because the resolution states Zejing, but I saw in the screen kanina, Zhejiang.
Pwede mo i-flash in resolution?
Pakalangan hirap pa sa'kin 'yung mga pangalan ng places.
So, uh, based on Google, I think it's Zhejiang. So, if uh, later, I reserve the right to just correct, uh, Mr. Speaker. Yun lang po, Mr. Speaker. She is young, huh? Yeah.
Daan? Anong para tr-
Um-
First, second, third?
Last, uh, third to the last, uh, whereas. Instead of Zejing, uh, maging Zhejiang, yun.
Can, can we spell out the the proposed place?
Yun, yun ang Mr. Speaker, na, na amend na.
Ah, 'yan na, anti din 'yan. I think 'yan din 'yung uh, dito ko, sa notes.
From kadinang Zejing, maging Zhejiang.
Beach, okay po.
I stand to be corrected, Mr. Speaker. That is accepted. That is correct. That's uh, that's all my uh, those are all my comments, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move to terminate the period of interpolation.
There is now a motion to terminate the period of interpolation and debate. You're listed seconded. There any objection? Chair here stands, same as here by approve.
I move to open the period of amendment.
There is now a motion to open the period of amendment. You're listed seconded. Is there any objection? None, same as if I approve.
Again, uh, Mr. Speaker, may we recognize uh, MP Don Loong to proceed with his proposed amendment.
So-
MP Don Loong is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, my first uh, amendment is just the correction of the address, which is already reflected in the screen. And uh, if we do courtesy to the uh, sponsor, if we could, the title, held at Zurich, if we could just make it held in Zurich, Switzerland? And that is all my proposed uh, amendment, Mr. Speaker. Uh, or rather, Mr. Speaker, I did mention that if it is possible to include in the whereas, whereas um-
Iwan mo na 'yung title.
Yeah, in, okay na 'yung Zurich, in, uh-
Dash na 'yung title.
Yes.
Baba mo na tayo sa body.
Where, um, whereas Muhammad Nur Qasib uh, is a student of the Philippine Science High School, Central Mindanao Campus, located in Nangka, Balloy, Lanau del Norte. Uh, the address is uh, Nangka, Balloy, Lanau del Norte. Philippine Science High School, Central Mindanao Campus, in Balloy, Lanau del Norte. Okay. And then, um, dun po sa fourth whereas, 'yung Marawi Siege, i-correct lang natin 'yung word na siege, and then lagyan ng the, victims of the Marawi Siege. Yun lang po, uh, ang proposed amendment po, Mr. Speaker.
From my end, Mr. Speaker, wala ho talagang objection. Kung dadagdagan pa niya, okay lang din. No, maraming salamat. Okay na po, Mr. Speaker. That's from my end. Uh, we have to ask also MP Ramba, Jam Ramos.
Amendment is accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, with that, Mr. Speaker, I move to terminate the period of amendment.
The period, there is a motion to terminate the period of amendments. You're listed seconded. There any objection? Chair here stands, same as here by approve.
And may I also move that uh, all members of the Parliament who are here present, including those in the Zoom, be considered as main authors of the consolidated resolution.
Is the sponsor willing to accept?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Mr. Speaker. Emperor.
Of course, gladly, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, and very gladly.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. With that, uh, may I uh, I move that we approve uh Resolution Number 384 and uh Resolution Number 388 subject to style.
There is now a motion to approve Resolution uh 384 and 388 subject to style. Is there any second? Is there any objection? Chair here's none, same as proposed Resolution 384 and 388 is now approved.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, there being no other item in the order of business, I move to adjourn uh this session until 1 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
There is a motion to adjourn uh until tomorrow at 1 o'clock. No need for second. That's the highest pre-